Good afternoon and welcome, everybody. We are here for our September 24th Budget and Public Policy Meeting. My name is Leigh Altman. I am an at-large county commissioner and also have the privilege of serving as vice chair. Our chairman is out today, as well as a couple of our members. So why don't we start, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and then introductions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that right?
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Leake. All right, we'll start with introductions, beginning on my right.
Good afternoon, I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board. Welcome.
Good afternoon, I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, elected by the people of District 6.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District 5.
Again, my name is Leigh Altman, County Commissioner.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin, County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Bill Mady Leake, and I represent the most powerful district in this county, which is District 2. Yes, welcome.
Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. I feel like I'm talking to most people behind my back. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, also known as Commissioner YTI. I serve you at large on the Board of County Commissioners.
And I will also give a shout-out to Commissioner Powell, who I think may be watching us online. I'm sorry, Mr. Wade, please continue.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Mike Bryan, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Are there any staff members you'd like to introduce themselves?
Dr. Kim Campbell, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Michelle Atrey, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, Adrian Cox, County Budget Director.
Good afternoon, Michael Gerswell, Director of Strategy and Innovation.
Good afternoon, Zibet Howard, Office of Strategy and Innovation.
Oh.
Good afternoon, Harley Goff, Free that these are their office strategy meetings.
Let's just hear from everybody, back row. Go ahead.
Madison Little, Senior Admin with the Clerk's Office.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Kathy Cornett, Charlotte Planning, Design and Development, Long Range Planning Division Manager.
Good afternoon, Maria Florin, Project Manager and Long Range Planning at the City of Charlotte.
Good afternoon, Catherine Mahoney, Long Range Planning.
Good afternoon, Erin Standforth, Sustainability Manager, Mecklenburg County.
Holly Kramer, City of Charlotte Planning and Tollentment Services.
Thank you. And on our right, anyone want to stand up and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Arielle Howard, Office of Strategy and Innovation.
Steve Wannen, a citizen of this state and county.
Thank you for coming. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Manager, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Today you have two items on your agenda. I'm going to ask that Erin Standforth, come forth, our Sustainability and Resiliency Manager, to provide you an overview of the Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated South Mecklenburg. This update fulfills a legal requirement to provide land use guidance for that area.
Good afternoon. Again, hello. I'm Erin Standforth, Sustainability Manager for the county. You want to introduce yourself again?
Hello, good afternoon again. My name is Maria Florin, and I'm with the City of Charlotte's Long Range Planning Team.
We're here today to talk about the Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated-
Speak into the mic, please.
We're here today to talk about the Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated South Mecklenburg, also known as CPUSM. And so what is this? This is a legal requirement by the State of North Carolina to provide land use guidance for this area in question. The area in question is that tiny little blue sliver on the far, far right of this slide. We're going to zoom into that as we go forward. But we're talking about a very specific area of the county, which is directly south of the town of Pineville. This effort began in the spring and has included opportunities for engagement throughout this area. We are now in the final phase of this project, where we are developing this draft Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated Southern Mecklenburg for review. As a result of our intergovernmental agreement with the City of Charlotte, this plan does have to be reviewed and adopted by the BOCC. As I mentioned, this is a joint effort between the City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. You can see the project area over there on the far right of this slide, far left. It's highlighted in red over there. Again, this is a legal requirement within North Carolina to develop future land use guidance, also known as place types, for the project area in question. This is a requirement of 160D with the State of North Carolina, and I'll just read it. "As a condition of adopting and applying zoning regulations under this chapter, a local government shall adopt and reasonably maintain a comprehensive plan or a land use plan." And again, this is a much more zoomed-in shot of the area in question. You can see there, to the west is South Carolina, and to the east is Lancaster Highway. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Maria.
Thank you, Erin. So for the project schedule, just to give you guys a high-level overview before we dive into some more details, the team began our pre-planning phase for this project earlier this spring, where we coordinated on the project development and completed a preliminary analysis of the project area. We then completed two phases of community engagement, where we went out to the community and had conversations about the project area to gather their input. And then, to complete the project schedule, again, the BOCC would review and adopt this So the required land use guidance that is being developed for this plan will be represented through a policy map or a place types map. To develop this map, the first step included staff developing a map with existing zoning districts, which have been translated to the most equivalent place type. And so I'll get into a little bit more detail on the place types on the next slides. But they're a tool to organize patterns of development. And then, in the next step, with community input, we reviewed those place types and the conditions, and had conversations about whether those place types that we designated warranted a transition to another place type. And then again, the final step would be adoption by Mecklenburg County. So I mentioned the place types in the previous slide. This is the tool that we use to provide land use guidance. It's a classification system to organize patterns of development that are more holistic and comprehensive than typical land use guidance. So there are 10 place types that we use that were adopted via the Charlotte Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and we have them here divided into three categories. Each address land use, building form, mobility choices, open space, and amenities. But for the sake of today's conversation, I've highlighted the four that are going to be relevant to this effort. So the four that we'll be talking about today are Neighborhood 1, which is the yellow one. That's primarily going to be single-family residential neighborhoods. We have Neighborhood 2 in orange. That's going to be slightly higher-density housing, such as townhomes or apartments. Then we have the Neighborhood Activity Center. That's the pink fuchsia color. That's usually characterized by low-rise buildings that are mixed-use in a pedestrian-oriented environment. And then the last one is Manufacturing and Logistics in purple, and that's characterized by large manufacturing, warehouse buildings, or distribution facilities. So we know that the county is not in the business of dealing with zoning usually, but so we wanted to provide some context in how place types relate to zoning. So place types and zoning work together, but they serve different roles. When rezonings are proposed, staff look to the place types for guidance to see if the proposal aligns with what the community envisioned for the area. Place types are not regulatory, but they are policy that help guide future decisions like rezonings or public investments. So place types, sorry. So place types, they're not going to change the zoning districts or the existing uses on the ground. This is just future guidance for land use, meaning the type of the development that's appropriate in the future. If someone wants to change their zoning district in the future, they would need to apply for a rezoning, which has its own public process, including having community meetings. And then staff and officials would refer to the adopted place types to inform their decisions on whether to approve or deny a request. So now I'll dive a little bit into the process for creating the policy map that will serve as that legally-required guidance. As I mentioned, in the project process, the first step we took was identifying the existing zoning and land uses and character of the project area. You'll see on the colors outside of the project area, the place types that have already been adopted here in Charlotte. And you can see that the majority of the project area is zoned R3 and R5. So next, the staff reviewed those zoning entitlements and the existing uses, and then translated them to the most equivalent place type. The majority of the project area, as you can see, is that yellow Neighborhood 1. And so, again, that's the established single-family neighborhoods. There was also a small portion that was designated for the Neighborhood 2 in orange, as you can see on the map, which is an existing townhome and apartment community. We then held community meetings following the engagement model that we've used during the city's community area planning process, and we shared the project effort with the community. We provided an overview of the project and had conversations about the colors on the map to get their input. Our conversations were primarily centered around the three focus areas that you see on the screen. The first is a storage facility site. The second is a mixed-use site that includes some medical and dental offices, as well as a daycare preschool. And then the third site is a church site where we held our meetings, Harrison United Methodist Church. And during our conversations with the community, we talked about how they think these areas should develop over time, so that we could designate the appropriate place types on the map. So during that engagement process in June and July, we had about 150 attendees, both in-person and online during our meetings. We held virtual meetings and in-person meetings as an option for people to attend. During that phase, we received about 106 responses. That included the comments from the in-person and virtual meetings, our online comment form via our website, as well as emails and phone calls. You can see on the pie chart, the majority of our comments were centered around the place types topic, which we were there to discuss, but we also heard a lot of questions and comments about annexation, mobility, taxes, public services, the process, zoning, and affordable housing. Of the place type comments that we received, some were general questions, suggestions, concerns, or support, but the majority that we heard was in support of or against place types for the focus areas. For each of the focus areas, we reached a majority consensus with the community on mapping them with those designated place types, as shown on this slide. So for Focus Area 1, that storage site, we landed on the Manufacturing and Logistics place type. For Focus Area 2, we landed on the Neighborhood Activity Center place type. And for Focus Area 3, the church site, we landed on the Neighborhood 1 place type. And so church uses are allowed within the Neighborhood 1 place type. So just to clarify that, since Neighborhood 1 is typically primarily single-family, church uses are allowed within the Neighborhood 1 place type. So here we have the final recommended policy map, but that reflects what we heard from the community. Now, keep in mind, after this plan is adopted, the map colors could still change over time via the rezoning process or future planning efforts, which would have their own public processes as well. Any future map changes would continue to require approval from Mecklenburg County and Board of County Commissioners. And so again, just to summarize, this is a legal, this project is fulfilling a legal requirement to provide the land use guidance for the area, and we've had engagement kind of all throughout the process. And then, we're now in the final stages of the project with the plan being finalized, and that draft plan will be released in October.
And so to recap, we are here, hello, at Public Policy on September 24th. The draft plan, so the Draft Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated South Mecklenburg, will be released on October 21st. We're hoping to bring a request for public hearing to the Board on October 21st to allow the community to comment within that plan, and then the public hearing will be held on November 5th. After that, we'll take all this information to the Charlotte Mecklenburg Planning Committee, and post that committee meeting on November 18th. They will give us a recommendation for path forward, and then we have to bring those recommendations back to you all for hopeful endorsement in December. And with that, we'll take any questions. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, District 6.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions. When you said that this was not regulatory, that just means it's not rezoning at this point, because that would be regulatory. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. This is future guidance to help inform the future rezonings. Yeah, so no zoning changes.
Okay. And can you go back to the slide with the timeline? There you go. So today is September 24th. It was the slide at the very end. There you go. The draft plan is not released until October 20th. What is happening between now and then? Like, why are we waiting to release the plan?
So we have the map that we have recommended that I've shown you here today, but we're preparing a project brief that kind of explains the whole process, so that'll all get released together on the 20th.
Okay, sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah. So it's being developed right now. So we have the plan that we showed up on the screen, the recommended map, but we're developing kind of a full document that kind of outlines the whole process and explains this, so it'll be a formal document for adoption. So we're in the middle of preparing that.
An accompanying narrative, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's more steps that you have to go through for like legal purposes or whatever? Okay, but it's not going to change from this, from what we're seeing today? Okay. It just seems like a really long timeframe, and that's why I was curious, why is it going to take so long? So there's a request for public hearing that we're going to do in our regular meeting? And if any community member show up?
Right, that'll be a consent item, yeah. Just a request. And then, that's a request to hold the hearing, but the actual hearing won't be until November 5th.
Aikaramba. Is there no way we could move that request for hearing up, you know, before the actual draft plan? Is like, can that be compressed at all?
I think, so the idea was to have the plan released for people to review and have it available, so that they can, if they have specific comments to that, they can provide comments once the full plan is released.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I know there are folks who are waiting on this, and so it just seems like a really long timeline. And is it, can you speak at all to access to utilities for any parts that are currently developed? Are they, is that something you can speak to, or no?
Yeah, so this project effort is only dealing with the land use. We're not looking at public services or any other items. So it's just land use in scope.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and it's very detailed and really good. I can even follow it, so I know it's good, with the maps and the colors. My question goes back to Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell's question about the regulatory. So does that mean it is not subject to the North Carolina General Assembly telling us what we can and cannot do with it?
That's a good question. So I would say that this plan fulfills a legal requirement that we have with 160D. And I'll invite my city counterparts to also add any information if you'd like. But at this time, this area of Pineville, this area of our county, rather, is out of compliance with 160D. And so this is the process we have to follow to get them back into compliance, to then allow them to be able to rezone or change types.
Yeah, I'll add, at this moment, that any pending rezonings that are in the area cannot move forward until there is a plan adopted, basically.
Okay, understood. And this is a very useful utility, but anytime you label something, there's always a propensity towards one group not getting something that another group gets. So is there a way to measure whether or not there would be any disparities? Like, for instance, is funding in any way tied to any of the allocated zones? And were the pros and cons presented to folks during those meetings?
I'll invite Kathy Cornett to answer that.
Hi, Kathy Cornett, Long Range Planning. I'm not sure this is on.
So typically, these plans do not provide any sort, they don't commit any funding. And this is a much smaller geography, obviously, and so it's a more streamlined plan. With our, right now, we have a community area planning process going on for the entirety of the City of Charlotte and other portions of unincorporated Mecklenburg County, and in that case, there's a policy document and an implementation plan that would describe projects and programs that would help implement the plan, but that piece, that implementation piece is not adopted, partially for the reason that it doesn't commit any funds. That typically happens through another process, so you all aren't committing any funds in that way. And it's not tied to any General Assembly funding either. 160D was adopted in July of 2021, and it just updated the way that, you know, for Charlotte, Charlotte Mecklenburg, we had already been complying with most of the requirements, but it basically says that you have to have this Comprehensive Plan Policy document. You have to have that policy in order to have the regulatory component.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Leake.
Let me first say thank you, and my concern is rezoning and bringing more people into the complex of Mecklenburg County. We're having trouble with the infrastructure of the city as it is. So have you talked about that as a major concern in bringing in more communities to Mecklenburg County?
Yeah, I'll come back over here to the map as well. So during our conversations with the community, we also tracked all of their conversations. We documented all of our responses and questions that we received, so we can provide that as well as part of the plan.
What were the concerns?
Yeah, there was concerns about increased density in some cases. In general, not towards any specific area, but in general, about, you know, increasing density and other concerns as well. But, so as a result of those conversations, the majority of the map was identified as that Neighborhood 1 place type, so that's maintaining the single-family residential character of the area. So there really wasn't any changes to the land use that's currently on the-
I'm talking about growth. And we're already having major issues with water, land, and other issues as the city grows and brings its growth to the county to be a part of. How are we going to deal with the growth that we already have? Every morning we're waking up and the pipes are bursting. So how do we adjust that to correction of growth?
So as city staff is going to, they're going to supplement this, I do want to just reemphasize, this is keeping us in compliance. We're not advocating for a particular type of zone, but I'll let, Holly, please.
Hi, Holly Kramer, Entitlement Services, City of Charlotte. So I work on the rezoning side of things. So given this map, once we have this map in place, if we have a developer looking to come in, and let's say they're proposing something like a multifamily development, that growth that you're speaking of, if that is in an area recommended for Neighborhood 1, we would take a look at that and say, well, our adopted guidance is Neighborhood 1, so what criteria is being met that we have adopted criteria? That speaks to justification for that growth. And we do infrastructure analyses. We take input from Charlotte Water, Stormwater, CDOT, Charlotte Fire, any applicable service that would service the site during the rezoning process to understand exactly impacts to county, as well as city services, as a result of the rezoning. So that would happen during the entitlement services stages of the process, rather than this policy stage, which is really just setting the scene of how we're going to evaluate future growth opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you.
That does not answer my question.
If I, if I understand, you're concerned about-
Growth and where we are with the infrastructure of the city and the county-
Yes, ma'am.
Adding more people to the landlines that we have now.
Yes, ma'am. I think many of us share that concern, and I think what I'm hearing them say is that they aren't in this action, doing anything to increase density. They're bringing the zoning in compliance with law.
But it will come.
Well, that's a probably different conversation with city council, and so I'm going to go and call on-
And what other people are on this committee? Are these the only people?
These are staff members to just help make sure we comply with the law. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it's county, state?
Well, we have county and city.
Who is county? One person? Yes, thank you.
So I'm going to turn to Commissioner Griffin now.
Let me, Mr. Attorney, with respect to 160D, that's for governmental bodies and entities. And I think when I drill down with you at 2001, when the county transferred its planning authority to the city, are we saying now that this plot of land is not included for 24 years? Because it sounds like, from their presentation, we're playing the city council role for planning and zoning, although the zoning piece is not up right now, and we're adopting the 2040 Plan overlay for this property. Is Pineville, where is Pineville in this conversation?
Pineville really isn't part of it. This is the county's unincorporated area. In order for there to be any rezoning, there must be a plan, and what they're presenting to you is what 160D requires. This is the plan for there to be any rezoning in that little area, just that little sliver. It has nothing to do with Pineville, other than just that little sliver.
All right, so now we sit as the quasi-judicial body for planning decisions that will roll up from whatever staff presents, just like the city council?
That's correct, as related to that sliver.
Then, for my time runs out, we need to drill down a little bit more, because if we're planning that role, Commissioner Leake's comments come to play, as others want to decide about development or changing things in that plot of land, we ultimately will make that final decision for that plot of land, not Pineville nor the City of Charlotte.
They will make the recommendation to the Board if there's a request, and the Board will make that decision, which is what the Board has done in the past. It's just there was no plan in place, and now they're presenting you a plan because 160D requires there to be a plan.
Right, okay, all right. So we're in a different position now. And so, Mr. Manager, this is going to be real interesting, because if they're talking about 2040 Plan and the UDO without direct relationship to this particular plot of land, they're speaking about policy documents that are already in place, when she says the 2040 Plan and the various place types. So those things are already in policy with the city. Are we by default, not default, but are we saying we're going to adopt their policy overlay?
No, that's why they're presenting the plan to the Board on just that little sliver. That's not the city, but the city manages it, because if by statute, we pass it on to the city. So they're presenting to you what's required by statute for the Board to react to, to create a plan for there to be rezoning. You can't do the rezoning without the plan.
Well, we need to, yeah, I mean, I got you where we are, Madam, Madam Chair, but if we're going to play that role, we need to be equipped to play that role a little bit more so than what we are today.
So let me turn to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Real quick, just to my colleagues, specifically District 6, are you hearing from the residents? And what's the general mood?
Yeah, I've been to the community meetings, but I do want to, if you could put it on Slide 12, I think it would be helpful to see. It's the one that shows the zoom-in of what's there now. Yes, oh, there. So look at how built-out this already is. There's not like a lot of land that we're talking about here, guys, about rezoning. So there's very little that's not already, single-family homes and what have you. So there's very small, it's not like we're going to be making a lot of decisions in this. So I just wanted to add that, if you look at this map, you see it's pretty built-out.
Thank you. That's important for us to hear. Thank you.
But I want to just-
Yes, sir. All right, go ahead. Let's just, one more minute for anyone who needs to do a follow-up. Did you finish your time?
Commissioner Meyer.
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, but that's the concern, is if a developer decides they want to do something different, because all of our communities start off with residential units, until someone comes in, has a better idea about an area. That's only my concern, is that Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell is that somebody may come up with a better airplane for part of that property. airplane for part of that property, as opposed to-
You mean, do you mean taking out the homes that are already there? Are you, are you saying-
Yeah, somebody could potentially want to develop it.
I suppose that's possible. But I don't think that this conversation really, you know, I think it's a little premature, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because it will come back to us-
To make that decision.
-if it is going to be, asked to be rezoned. So we do have the power to say no.
Thank you.
At that time.
Yep. All right. Well, I'll let everybody else. So if you have one more minute, each of you, go ahead. Commissioner Townsend.
My question again is about measurement. Do we have anything in play to measure benefits, pros and cons, things of that nature? And were they communicated? Because I didn't get the answer to that. Was that communicated to? What, what are the benefits of being zoned in one way versus another?
I, I can start and then, and then let the city take over if need be. I'll, I'll just say that the purpose of this is to bring us into compliance. And so at this stage, if someone wanted to rezone a parcel, they can't. That, that isn't allowed because there isn't a plan in place. So I would say that's the overarching benefit.
Yeah. And I'll also add, during our, our conversations with the community, similar to how we've done this engagement in Charlotte, we go to the community and we present, you know, we have, we look at, we, we take a kind of a deep dive at each of these focus areas, for example. We look at the site together, review the character, review the zoning and the land use. And we ask them, is the manufacturing and logistics place type an appropriate use here? Or is there a place type here? Or would you prefer another place type and why? So that, those, we didn't really do it kind of pros and cons, but what does the community think in terms of one place type or another?
Thank you. Commissioner Leake?
Who presented this to the county first? Who came with this issue?
Did you, did you say to the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I suppose.
Um, yep. Let me-
There was a request to Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell. Some people, the church wants to rezone to use some property. They can't because there's no plan in place. This is the plan. Otherwise, they can't do anything in that little area.
With that church, with the church.
I think it's the church that reached out to you, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, and say, want to do some changes there. And they can't do it without a plan in place. So it can't be rezoned without this step because the statute has changed.
I'm afraid that if we do this, what political impact would it have on Mecklenburg County? It will.
All right. Well, thank you for the debate and discussion and for the information and for the presentation.
Thank you.
This is just for information at this time. So at this moment, I will turn back to the manager for our next item.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The second item, Michael Griswold, will provide the board an update and share the results from our annual employee climate survey.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Altman, members of the board, and County Manager Bryant. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm excited to present the results of our 2025 Employee Climate Survey. This is one of the most important ways that we hear directly from our employees, and it provides valuable insights to guide the county forward. Today, I'll share what we learned, how employees are experiencing their workplace, and what steps we can take to continue strengthening our organization. So here's how we'll spend our time today. I'll begin with an overview of the survey itself, what it is, how it's conducted, why it matters. From there, I'll review the outreach strategies we used this year and the response rates that we achieved. We'll then move into the countywide results, where I'll walk through the key findings across several areas, including a discussion of both the quantitative and qualitative comments. Finally, I'll conclude with recommendations for improvement and a preview of what's next for the survey. My goal is to give you not just the numbers, but also the context that makes this survey meaningful. So the Employee Climate Survey is a critical tool for capturing the perspectives of our staff across the county. It allows us to track progress over time, identify emerging challenges, and highlight where leadership is making a positive impact. This year, employees contributed nearly 8,000 open-ended comments, in addition to their quantitative survey responses. To make sense of this large volume of input, our team used a systematic process. We carefully coded every comment into themes, ensuring that each topic raised, whether it was compensation, workload, or some other topic, was captured accurately. We assessed the sentiment of those comments, classifying them as positive, negative, neutral, or mixed. And critically, we removed any information that could identify individual respondents so that feedback remained completely confidential. This approach allowed us to turn thousands of individual voices into clear patterns and insights that can inform at the county level. So driving participation is always essential to the credibility of our survey. And this year, we moved from an ad hoc engagement model to a more intentional and coordinated strategy. We developed a communications toolkit, and you can see the timeline here. This toolkit was for department directors, and it included a timeline for outreach activities, example emails for reminders, key message points to reinforce the importance of participation, and even ideas for engagement events that department directors could share with their departments. This shift created consistency across the enterprise. Directors were better equipped to encourage their teams, and employees saw a clear and coordinated effort to hear their voices. This toolkit was well received, and it represents a best practice that we can build upon in future years. So participation, like I mentioned, is the foundation of this survey's value. This year, 4,272 employees completed our survey, which represents 76% of the eligible workforce at the time the survey was fielded. That's a remarkable level of engagement and reflects the trust that employees place in this process. At the department level, most areas exceeded average participation. However, some of our larger departments reported lower rates, which pulled the overall county percentage slightly below last year's level of 77%. So this tells us two things. We have very strong engagement in many areas, and that we have opportunities to target specific departments to increase their participation in the future. So before we dive into the results, it's important to understand who we heard from in this year's survey. Survey participants were largely representative of the county's overall workforce when compared by classification, position level, and years of service. One consistent gap is with part-time staff, who are slightly underrepresented in this year's survey. This is not a new pattern. It's actually something that we saw last year and the year before as well, and is likely tied to the fact that part-time employees have less time on the clock to devote to completing the survey when compared to the other activities that they're responsible for. We will continue to monitor this trend and look for ways to better capture part-time voices in future surveys. Looking at demographics by race and ethnicity, the survey results are generally aligned with the county workforce. However, we did notice a modest underrepresentation of Black or African-American staff. This points to a clear area of improvement for next year. We need to make sure that these voices are fully represented in the results. It's also worth noting that our survey offers inclusive gender identity options that are not reflected in the county's HR data. Categories such as non-binary, non-conforming, or prefer-to-self-describe appear in our survey results, but not in HR's records. And this just demonstrates our effort to give all employees a place to share their identity and perspective. So with that context set, let's now turn to what employees actually told us. So again, participation is important, but the real value in this survey lies in the results and the feedback that employees give us about their work, their leadership, and their overall, overall experience with Mecklenburg County. So here, we'll talk about the motivation and satisfaction index, which tracks employee attitudes across a range of questions. This year, most results were strong. Questions about supervisors and coworkers scored well above our target of 88%. In fact, 10 of the 11 departments showed increases in, over the last three years, which is a clear sign of positive momentum. We do have two questions, those two at the bottom, that fell just short of our target. Again, target's 88%. These two were at 87, so they're, they're really close. But those are, I would recommend Mecklenburg County as a good place to work, and most days, I feel good about coming to work. So though these are only slightly below target, these two, two questions are important cultural indicators. They tell us how employees feel at the most fundamental level about their workplace, and that makes them critical questions to monitor closely in the future. So looking at the trend, again, this is still motivation satisfaction. Looking at the trend, we saw that the motivation satisfaction index increased this year, reaching the highest level since FY 2020. It also ties the highest results that we've seen since 2008, which is a significant milestone. The big takeaway here with this trend is that employees who participated in the survey this year are more satisfied with working at Mecklenburg County now than they have been at any point in the last four years. Now, whenever possible, my team and I, we like to compare our results to external benchmarks. Using Gallup's National Survey as a point of reference, Mecklenburg County employees consistently report much higher satisfaction. On average, our results have been 31 percentage points higher than Gallup's national averages over the last three years. And I do want to note that while the survey instruments are not identical, this comparison is a strong indicator that we remain well above the national norms when it comes to employee satisfaction. And as we modernize the ECS, which we'll talk about more at the end of this presentation, we'll continue exploring ways to align our measures with national benchmarks to strengthen that comparability. So turning to perceptions of the Board of County Commissioners, our results for the statement "The Board Values Employees" rose 12 points this year, from 64% last year to 76% this year. That's a meaningful increase and an important sign of progress. The qualitative feedback that we received was balanced. About a third of comments were positive, and employees pointed to compensation, benefits, and your commitment to residents. About another third or so were neutral, reflecting a lack of awareness about the board's role, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail later. And about one-third were negative, and those comments primarily focused on telework policy or concerns about disconnect between the board and staff. So I, I mentioned the, the awareness piece. And in fact, awareness itself emerged as a key factor this year when we were looking at the board results. So when we exclude don't-know responses, which is typically our, our practice, agreement with the statement "The Board Values Employees" was 78%. However, when we looked at the don't-know responses and when we included those, the result dropped to 57%. So breaking this out, we, we asked ourselves the question, okay, so if there are a sizable number of employees who don't know who the board is and what you all do, well, who are those people, right? So we looked, and newer employees and frontline staff were least likely to know who the board is and what role you all play. Again, nearly a third of all board-related comments indicated little or no knowledge of the board or your responsibilities. This is both a challenge and an opportunity. So a practical step could be to enhance new employee orientation, to include a clear introduction to the board, your role, and how your role differs from that of the county manager. So workload is always a closely watched topic for the survey. And this year, 79% of respondents agreed that their workload is reasonable. That is the highest level of agreement in five years. On the surface, that is encouraging, and, and it is. However, open-ended comments revealed another layer, with many employees describing workload as not just heavy, but at times chronic and structural, particularly in frontline, high-intensity roles such as public health or social services. Employees reported strain from vacancies, burnout, and emotional exhaustion, and some even cited FMLA use tied to mental health stress. Those findings remind us that workload is about more than just the numbers. It's also about sustainability and staff well-being. So employee development is another area of consistent strength for the survey. For five consecutive years, the development index has remained above 90%, and this year it reached 93%. That reflects broad agreement that Mecklenburg County provides opportunities for growth. And in fact, when we looked at a specific question, 90% of employees said that they believe that they can develop professionally within Mecklenburg County, which again, is the highest level in five years. So while the numbers are strong, the comments, the qualitative comments added nuance. So employees praised the training and support that they received, but some voiced concerns about advancement pathways. Some feel that growth can feel stagnant. These highlights are important, this highlights the importance of investing not only in staff training, but also in leadership development, ensuring that managers have the skills to coach, delegate, and guide career planning for their teams. Safety is another aspect that we explored in this year's survey. Overall, employees reported feeling safe during regular work hours, both at their workplace and while traveling to and from their vehicles, though confidence was notably lower after hours, with some employees sharing concerns about building access and parking security. On a positive note, awareness of how to access help in a safety concern rose by 14 points this year compared to FY 2023. We would believe that that is a direct result of efforts led by the county's security manager and targeted communications campaigns that rose, or raised awareness about how to contact the security operations center. Moving to the qualitative responses related to safety and security, again, additional nuance emerged. Again, employees generally feel safe during the day, and at night or during off-hours, employees made positive strides with regard to employee perceptions of safety. This feedback does highlight the importance of continuing to invest in those security measures, especially for after-hours and frontline work. So as I begin to, to wrap up and move into recommendations, I wanted to briefly touch on the most prevalent positive qualitative themes and the main takeaways for each. The number on each bar represents the number of positive comments that were categorized for each theme. And the themes listed here were the four with the most number of positive comments. So you can see with the leaders and department director, employees expressed strong appreciation for their department directors, citing transparency, inclusion, and effective leadership. With team dynamics, many praised their colleagues and valued that supportive team dynamic that they experienced within their work group. Numerous comments reflected feeling valued by both department and county leadership, and morale was frequently cited, with some staff expressing genuine pride and enjoyment in their work. These are important cultural strengths to preserve and to build upon. Now, at the same time, employees raise consistent concerns. This slide outlines the most prevalent negative themes and main takeaways for each. Once again, the numbers on each bar represent the number of negative comments that were categorized for each theme. So at the top, we have dissatisfaction with telework policies was a recurring theme. Moving into workload, workload strain, whether that's from vacancies, inefficiencies, or service demands, was often cited by employees. Some employees felt undervalued, pointing to gaps in recognition or appreciation from their managers, supervisors, or those who work closely with them. And dissatisfaction with compensation also emerged as a concern in many of the comments that we read. Together, these themes highlight areas where focused improvement could be most beneficial. So with all that said, and with this feedback in hand, we now turn to the most important question of what do we do with, with all this information, right? So after analysis of both the quantitative and qualitative comments, my team and I identified four strategic focus areas to help drive organizational improvement. For each one, I will highlight a specific recommendation that my team and I have shared with the county manager and his executive team. So first, with employee well-being and positive workplace culture, we recommend to invest in employee retention through clearer career pathways, competitive incentives, and stronger well-being supports. This recommendation ties directly to the county manager's organizational reset and associated culture and succession planning initiatives. Throughout this survey, employees expressed concern over unclear career pathways, perceived pay inequities, and limited support for balancing work and life demands. These factors create risks of losing experienced, mission-driven staff who are essential to service delivery and continuity. Leadership could explore retention strategies such as structured career progression plans, targeted advancement training with protected learning time, enhancing incentives, and stronger supports for balancing work and life. With regards to clear leadership expectations, roles, and responsibilities, we recommend to clarify the leadership roles by integrating an overview of the executive team and the board responsibilities into employee orientation. So this recommendation ties back to the previous slides that we discussed around the perceptions and awareness of the board, and by extension, the county's executive team. So as you'll recall, about a third of comments concerning the board expressed not knowing who the board members were and what your role is. who the Board members were and what your role is. So this lack of awareness can lead some employees to feel disconnected from county leadership and cause some employees to hold misconstrued perceptions about your responsibilities versus that of the county manager. So, leadership could consider adding a more in-depth county leadership roles and responsibilities overview during employee orientation. Additionally, orientation could be further enhanced by having a rotating executive team member at each orientation to help explain the different roles and responsibilities of the Board and the executive team. Moving into effective change management and transparent communication, we recommend to strengthen trust by communicating decisions clearly and closing employee feedback loops in a timely and visible manner. So this recommendation ties back to opportunities to enhance communication, follow-up, and action when leadership makes organizational changes or decisions. Employees have raised concerns that leadership has historically not acted on feedback, pointing to unresolved issues from previous surveys. So when employees don't see that follow-up, or when the why behind these decisions is not explained, it can erode trust and contribute to that disengagement that we sometimes see. So leadership could foster a stronger culture by regularly sharing feedback and how it influenced decisions. Channels might include Your County Manager messages, Employee News Now messages, targeted updates, or potentially even town halls where appropriate. Importantly, regardless of the decision that is made, it's important that the rationale be shared, again, as appropriate and where appropriate, with county employees to maintain that transparency and acknowledge the feedback received. Finally, in operational excellence and process improvement, we recommend to redesign or explore redesigning outdated workflows in departments that face high workload strain, and include frontline input into some of those decisions. This recommendation ties back to workload items that we discussed previously, and you'll recall that employees cited workload concerns with some negative perceptions of workload, often tied to inefficient processes and outdated systems, and not just the volume of work. So many employees called for simplifying or redesigning workflows with frontline input so improvements could reflect the realities of day-to-day operations. Leadership could consider structured process reviews, led in partnership with staff, to identify those bottlenecks and implement practical, sustainable improvements. These focus areas, again, connect directly to the themes raised by employees and align with the county manager's ongoing organizational reset and culture initiatives. So finally, before I wrap up, a brief word about the future of the Employee Climate Survey. So over the years, the ECS has grown in length and complexity, but it hasn't undergone a full review in quite some time. To ensure that the survey remains relevant and actionable, we will pause the spring cycle of the ECS and conduct a redesign. The goals of this redesign are to update and modernize the Employee Climate Survey, to reduce the number of questions so that we can improve completion time and analysis so that we can give you all and employees results sooner, align the survey with the county's new culture framework that is currently being developed by County Human Resources. So our plan, after we pause this and go through a redesign in the spring, is to relaunch a redesigned survey in fall of 2026. And real quick, I just want to address any employees who may be listening. I know that some of you have expressed concerns about whether this survey is taken seriously, and I want to acknowledge those concerns, and commit that the redesign will make this tool more meaningful, more timely, and more impactful in guiding decisions with Mecklenburg County. Employee trust and feedback is critical to any healthy organization, and we are committed to elevating the employee voice, not just in 2025, but moving forward as well. So earlier this afternoon, all county employees received a message from the county manager regarding the ECS results. This message included a link to the dashboard so that all employees can see the full slate of results for the county. If you did not receive this email, or you're otherwise unable to access the dashboard, please email employclimatesurvey@meccnc.gov. We'd be happy to look into that for you. So finally, before I conclude, just want to recognize the Strategy and Innovation Team for their excellent work on this year's survey. Deputy Director Carly Godfrey, who joined the team just last month or so, is already providing outstanding leadership to the team. Senior Analyst and Survey Lead Gage Tillman. We have Survey Co-lead Myra Ray Howitt, Julia Baker Jones, and Sidney Markham, who led the qualitative review, and Eris Cruz-Mora, who took charge of the Department Deliverables and Communications. The team demonstrated exceptional planning, methodological rigor, and curiosity as we worked to better understand and provide actionable recommendations for this year's results. Their hard work and dedication made this survey possible, and thank you all. So, Vice Chair Altman, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Thank you to all the team members here today. Well, I'll start on my right, we'll go in the reverse direction. Commissioner Meyer.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all, your team and everything for work on this. I know it's a lot, and it's data, I don't, you know, I'm not a data person, so thank you for being the data person. So, just a couple of things. I want to shout out to Suzette and the Public Information Department because I think that with the employees not knowing who we are, or what we do, or that kind of thing, I think they're addressing that. Even just with the holiday video that you're doing, just little things, I think, I hope, will make a difference, and I do think that it will make a difference. So, and I don't, I'm sorry that there are employees who don't know who we are or what we do, and so during orientation, has, is that not part of orientation about the structure of things?
Commissioner Myers, currently, it is not a part of the new employee orientation, so that is one of other options, several options that we're exploring, to enhance our employees' understanding as it relates to not only who our Board members are, but your role as well.
Okay. I think that would be a great idea, and I know you mentioned that. And I'm also glad that our employees do feel safe at work. I think that's an important piece of data there. And the telework, how long ago was that, that we stopped that?
So that goes back to COVID.
COVID, but when did, wasn't it just last year?
It was July 1st, and we brought our employees back.
Okay. So, we've got time to, you know, I personally think that will improve as that kind of is a thing of the past, and...
I concur. And we heard our employees loud and clear.
Yeah.
And we're looking at everything as it relates to the feedback that we receive, which includes teleworking.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you for your work.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Slide 13. Yeah, I'm just looking at the bottom rung on the right side with employees more than 10 years up. I'm just trying to, I got your original comment, about a third of the new folk with little tenure, five years or less, but the senior folks, that sort of caught my attention. But let me also add what Commissioner Meyer said too, for Suzette and her team, in trying to get us out with coffees and other things. I think that will pay dividends for the staff as well as the community at large. But that last rung up there kind of caught my attention of the senior folk who had little knowledge.
Sure. And what I would add to that is, you know, while we highlighted the newer folks, that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody else knows everything. So I think it's a, an all-of-the-above approach, right? So while we may be able to capture new people as they come in and share that Board and executive team distinction, certainly the work that is going on in public information and other areas could also help to supplement that.
Yeah, I just did tell what Commissioner Meyer said. I think what they're doing is immensely valuable for the staff, but also valuable for the community at large, too. So thank you, thank all of you for participating in that.
I agree.
Commissioner Lee.
Let me say thank you, and Acting Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I was at a meeting on Monday, and some people stood up and said they work for the county. I said, "Well, I've never seen you, I don't know who you are, and I don't know your job, but that's not your fault, Mr. Manager." It might be a part of my fault. It was a care group that had come to us from the city and now with us. So I'm hoping that during orientation that we can, at least somebody can put a name with a face or a job with a face. That will help us a whole lot. And I'm just excited about the Communication Department. That has been one of my strong concerns about our information getting out to the public and knowing what we're doing and why we're doing it. Many of us don't know our role as county commissioners, and I'm not speaking from a negative perspective, but sometimes we get so excited with what we're trying to get done, we overstep our bounds, or either we don't do enough to make it happen. So I'm hoping that in the future, that we know what our job is as county commissioners, and how far it reaches, and what we can do and cannot do. And from the political perspective, I'm not dealing with political parties as such, because when we sit here, we represent all the people within the confines of our district. We represent everybody. But I'm concerned about support staff, which I've always been concerned about, support staff of county commissioners. And I've spoken to Dina when she was here. I've spoken to, when I got on the board, that was one of the first things, I wanted to make sure that we had support. We had support before you, the five of you all came, because you need support. You can't do it all by yourself. It's not possible for that to happen. So I'm hoping that we will look at that and look at what the responsibility will be and can be, and how far they can go with us. So again, let me say thank you for your presentation. It's information that we need and we need to know, and as we represent the community, we let them know what our job is. So they will not think and hold us accountable for something that we're not responsible for. So I'm just excited over our manager, who's brought a new flavor, not speaking against the previous manager, I'm not saying that, but I want to thank you, sir, for your leadership and longevity with the county. You're not a Johnny Come Lately. You've been here, you know the process and what is expected of all of us. So I just pray that your success will be positive as you journey with us and we journey with you, and this Board will work together. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
First, I want to say to anybody that's watching online, I apologize for inappropriately characterizing this part of the meeting as an environmental stewardship thing. I just saw climate and went with it. But anyway, I also want to echo thanks to both departments. PI Department, excellent, I'm able to like resend things on Facebook and IG. That really goes a long way. I just have two questions, and the other staff, this is great. Data is my thing, and I love it, and I think you guys had a lot of care and intentionality in trying to make sure that everybody's voice was heard without the fear of being exposed. I used to work for an anonymous hotline, and that's not an easy task. So, you know, being able to do that, I applaud you greatly. Just question, slide number nine, can we go to that one quickly? Why is it, if all of those at the above, and I just want to make sure that I'm not drawing the wrong correlation, if all of those are at 90%, why those last two are skewed at 87%? It seems like it's not a, like they're not skewing the right way. Is that to you, or am I reading?
Yeah, so I mean, each one of these questions is individual, right?
Okay.
And any individual employee's response can be all over the place for each of these questions, right? So, you know, we take each line as its own, and we calculate their percentages, and this is kind of how it broke down. I think, you know, my takeaway for this is yes, while those two are lower, they are right at target, and honestly, one percentage point either way, I mean, that can be noise, right? So, while these are technically below target, I would consider them to be right in line with that.
Okay. And my other question is, because the employees, and I would imagine these are employees who don't work in the building, don't know a lot about what we do, did they have any suggestions about how we could, you know, become more interactive with them and help them to learn about what we do, or?
Sure. So, on occasion, we'll see comments that praise you all or suggest that, you know, it'd be helpful to see you all more frequently. I think those are less common, because I think you all do a pretty good job of getting out and being visible. So, there's some things here and there, but nothing that would rise to the level of, you know, us calling it out as a theme, per se. So I think for us, it really just stood out as we were looking at those "don't knows", and people who just said, "Well, my qualitative response is, I just don't know enough to tell you anything." So collectively, taking all those, that's what stood out to us.
Well, I've worked now for both the city and the county, and I can just say, excellent job. I really appreciate the fact that you care enough to even survey. So, I've worked for companies that have not, not specifically talking about the city. I don't know if that is city employees still here. But yeah, kudos, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner SRM.
Thank you. I just wanted to underline that you are doing an outside survey, and how is that different? Or is, you know, is it just because it's outside, or will it be similar to this?
It will complement this work. What Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell is referring to is a survey that takes a deeper dive into our organizational culture, and looking at our organizational values as well. So, the team is going to factor the feedback that is received by this survey from this survey, as well as the responses to that culture survey, and then we'll have workgroups to go even deeper, to discuss what is the desired culture of this organization as it relates to Mecklenburg County. If you ask 10 of our employees to describe the culture of the organization, you'll probably get 10 different answers. And we want to make sure that there's some alignment, some commonality as it relates to the culture of this organization. And that's in part why Michael said that we're going to delay the next survey to the fall of fiscal year '26, so we can get all of that information that we received, take a look at it, come up with strategies and actions that will help us move toward to achieving that desired culture. I own, as county manager, with that, providing that support for the, what the culture would look like, but I want to empower all of my employees to have some level of influence in designing with that culture.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate that, and I just want to say, I have noticed that we are getting more invitations to things, especially from Park and Rec. They've invited us to park discussions and openings and things like that. That's been a change. And, you know, I hope that more departments can invite us to events. We honestly, a lot of times, we don't even know what's happening because we don't, we just don't have the information. So, I hope that, you know, you're open to having us come to more events where employees are present. And just want to put a little shout-out there for Employee Fest coming up.
It is.
I will be there, and I hope my colleagues will, too, and I hope to meet more employees.
You'll be where?
I think it's October...
In October.
Sixteenth, or something like that.
But you ought to get a form of communication about that. Employee Fest, it's October 16th.
Sixteenth, right.
16th.
I think it would be great if we had some sort of t-shirt or something saying, you know, Commissioner, because I'm, I know when I've gone, you know, I'm just blending in with the crowd, and they don't really know, you know, and I would, I'm just a little more shy, maybe. I don't go out there and say, "Hi, I'm so-and-so," you know, so maybe we could work on how to intermingle a little more.
And Madam Vice Chair, I do want to say I appreciate your feedback and observations of the good work that our PI has been performing. It is intentional, it is in response to conversations that I and Suzette have had with you on separate occasions, ranging from those one-pagers to the videos. Suzette and I meet weekly, and a standing agenda is how we can further engage and enhance your platform, within reason, you know, we know that certainly you're on that policy side, that governance side, but we want to be certain that we are responsive to some of those conversations that we've had. She even had more ideas on how we can accomplish that, so there's more to come. She's only been in a row 60, 60 days, and if you take a look at all the things that she's done, not just for the Board, but for the organization as a whole, I'm always receiving positive unsolicited feedback about Suzette and the entire PI team. So it has been a really good experience with the great ideas that she has put in place and set forth. I'm very proud of the work that she's doing, and it will have a positive outcome on some of these opportunities that have been identified today.
Thank you. Yes, I think we are so lucky that with both you and our head of PI, we have the benefit of all that institutional knowledge, plus really fresh eyes and a lot of... of all that institutional knowledge, plus really fresh eyes and a lot of energy to, you know, do it differently. And we keep seeing that manifest, and it's a great thing. I had a couple of questions as well. Looking at slide five, the lowest metric is on the far left. Is that the sheriff's office?
It is.
Okay. So I wonder, you know, as those employees don't actually, they're technically county employees, but they don't, they're not under your leadership, you're not, I wonder if that should be there because it's sort of dragging down what we have here, and it's really not a fair reflection on county leadership, but that's just, you know...
Good observation.
Something to think about. Then page nine. You know, I would be interested, most days, let's see, I would, the last, second to last, I would recommend Mecklenburg County to others as a good place to work because elsewhere there was a reference to dissatisfaction with pay, and obviously, public service pays less than the private sector. I think it might be important to see if there's a way to drill down in future surveys to see the source of that, of that weakness, because if it has to do with pay, then we can further understand what the source of it is because...
Yeah, that's good feedback, and in addition to that, we're working with our HR department to develop a new classification compensation strategy that would be responsive to some of that feedback as well.
Yeah, that's good. And I would be interested, most days I feel good about coming to work, how that differs from just, you know, any employer, because, you know, it's probably, you know, a fair amount of the time that no matter where you work, you might prefer to not. So, you know, I just don't know if, how much of that is a reflection on this organization versus just, you know, the, what the mean is for that kind of response. All right, next. So, Mr. Manager, I'm interested if you feel comfortable sharing your, because remote work was a big deal.
Sure.
It was a really difficult thing for our workforce. I mean, my position has always been that that is the decision of the manager.
It is.
And, and I continue to believe that and respect that very much. I'm just interested if you feel comfortable sharing, if you have a different philosophy.
I feel very comfortable sharing with you where I stand regarding teleworking. My focus, as I stated earlier in response to Commissioner SRM, is on the organizational culture, and that's going to take some time. You know, you cannot reset your culture within months, so that is the focus. And while doing so, I'm in the opinion that teleworking is something that we cannot do while that culture work is going on.
Okay.
Now, in addition, with respect to that, I've had conversations already with my cabinet members, with my executive team relative to teleworking, and so those conversations have been initiated, but there's more conversations to occur. But I will not be shifting to teleworking anytime in the near future. However, again, I respect, that is a conversation that we must have as an organization. When you think about, we have, I think, five generations in the organization, and certainly they all have a different perspective in terms of what the workplace should entail, including teleworking. And the younger generation will be our leaders of tomorrow. So I recognize that in order to retain top talent, that it is important that you give consideration to all options regarding teleworking. I do believe that some of our employees, not all, but when you, when you say we're no longer teleworking, I believe that they do confuse that with the flexibility that they may have, like if they have to go to a doctor's appointment at the end of the day, you know, that that's a conversation that they need to have with their supervisor if they take off early. But there's so many different examples of being flexible in comparison to teleworking. And then I also will say that as an organization, I'm in the opinion that we are not prepared to telework. You know, it's not that you could just flip a switch and say, "We're going to start teleworking on Monday," but instead, you have to have processes and structure in place so that we can assure that we continue to meet the demand of our customers. Yeah, there's positions like IT, you know, that is more positioned to do that in comparison to others. However, when I have this conversation with my cabinet, we're going to look at the organization as a whole and discuss what's fair and to ensure that we continue to provide services that meet the expectation of this community, and we factor the unintended consequences as well. So that is a conversation that I am looking forward to having with my workforce, with my cabinet, the culture work that I, that I referenced earlier. When they have those work groups to discuss some of the feedback, they will touch on teleworking as well to have deeper conversation with employees about their interests. So those conversations will continue.
Thank you.
And then ultimately, yeah, there will be a decision regarding teleworking, one way or the other, but that is not a decision that's going to be made in the immediate future.
Thank you. I appreciate your deep thinking and thoughtfulness on it. You know, one thing about the board updates that the PI sends out, I don't know if that goes to staff, but in terms of staff awareness about the work of the board, if they're, that's not on the regular, that they're receiving those board updates that y'all produce that are really nice, maybe that can be added. It could maybe be a very easy lift to increase awareness of board work. 79% found workload to be reasonable. Slide 14. Coincidentally, I had a meeting today with a social worker who was saying that during her tenure, not with the county, but in the ecosystem, that she had numerous DSS workers who simply never called her back, like not one time. And I've, I continue, not just me, you know, we all have this concern, but I continue to be concerned about our social workers, those who really are confronted with secondary trauma, workload, going into homes, and I hope that the jobs that have the most emotional toll, we have a finer, finer lens, more drill down to really understand how they're coping because if they become overwhelmed or they emotionally check out or they can't keep up, where it's a different level. It's not just bad customer service. It can jeopardize the safety of someone who's vulnerable. So I just hope we can think about that. I am excited that you're going to do a deep dive on your, your whole model of how you do this. It's always good to take a step back like that. I support that. And, and that's all. Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you, Michael Lanting. Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the items that I have on the agenda this afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Oh, and one last thing on that. I've noticed several of our park facilities, in terms of who are, who is the board, like, are showing very old pictures of county commissioners, like two boards ago, in some of our facilities. So I do think it would be good to try to refresh that so people know who, who are elected to represent them. Okay.
Sure.
So does that conclude all of your items?
It does.
All right, then at this time, we will have Commissioner Reports, starting with Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just want to remind the public that the renaming of the Groll Center to Catherine M. Wilson Center will occur on this Saturday, September the 27th, at 10:30 a.m., and based on the pending forecast, I got an email saying that it will be inside, so you won't get wet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Commissioner Leek.
I just want us to be grateful for the services that we provide for this community, much greater than some of the other counties that we have. And when I'm talking with people, I'm dealing now with a family that's in serious difficulties with a mother, father, and a deceased husband. So I appreciate the work that our people do, and if the general public knew what we were supposed to do, I think they would appreciate, I think they appreciate us anyway. Our job is to work for them. They don't work for us. We work for them. And that this board will be united in issues that will impact the total community. That's a must. People read us. We don't have to say a word. They read our behavior and our actions. So I don't want us to get the same reputation that other organizations have across this community or across this state. So again, to you, Mr. Chairman, as our leader, I appreciate you and respect you to the highest, and I think you have one of the best staffs in the country. I really think that as I've traveled across the country, I've been at this a long time through the church work that I do and traveling, and then with government, we have some wonderful people that work with us and work for us. So without good leadership, we don't have good followership. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
...staff. Thank you so much. You make us, and you look good. I have to say that. I'm a stickler for how we look as professionals. As a classroom teacher, when I was teaching, we looked like we were going to church every morning, not like we were going to the garbage can to work. You all look wonderful, professional, and when people see you looking good, they treat you good.
Thank you. No report. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you. I just wanted to let folks know that I do have two community meetings coming up. The first one will be tomorrow night at Christ the King Church, which is in South Tryon. It's 13501 South Tryon, and these are around the transportation sales tax increase. And so we're going to be presenting multiple different angles to look at this tax, and we're going to have Katz do a presentation, and then we're going to have some other community members offering some differing views. So please check out, it's on the website for Mecklenburg County, but if you want to sign up, 6 o'clock to 7:45 tomorrow. And then the other one will be in Matthews on October 9th, and I will announce that one closer to the time. So everybody's welcome. Thank you.
I just want to remind people that tomorrow night, there is a Public Input Information Session for the Freedom Park Drudging, which is about to take place. It's happening now at Parkerd Park, and they're almost finished, I hope, and they're going to move over and tackle that at Freedom Park. And if you would like to register, it's a virtual meeting, publicinput.com/ponddrudging, or I can send it to you if you want to email me. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.